Chairman Rossler, we're ready to start when you're ready.
Very good. Good evening, and welcome to the April 21st meeting of the City of Vista Planning Commission. This meeting is being held in accordance with the State Executive Order N29-20. The public cannot attend the meeting in person or at the result of the county's health orders. All communications from the public will be accepted either electronically via email to planningcomments@cityofvista.com or through voicemail at 760-643-2816. The meeting is being broadcast live on the city's website. The meeting will also be held in a conference call format with all commissioners calling in from remote locations. Slides will be shown on the live broadcast as they are discussed. Our first item of business is roll call. Ms. Chow, will you call the roll, please?
Certainly, Chairman Rossler. Chairman Rossler?
Here.
Vice Chair Kramer?
Here.
Commissioner Hastings?
Here.
Commissioner Grimm?
Here.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Here.
Commissioner Looney?
Here.
Commissioner Aguilera?
Here.
Student Commissioner Wolf? Student Commissioner Natali? Let the record indicate that all commissioners are present and student commissioners are absent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, our next item of business is approval of the minutes from our February 18th meeting. If there are no changes, then would someone like to make a motion to approve?
This Commissioner Garrettson, I'd like to move approval of the minutes as written.
Is there a second?
This is Don Looney, and I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of our April 18th meeting. Ms. Chow, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Chairman Rossler?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kramer?
Yes.
Commissioner Hastings?
Yes.
Commissioner Grimm?
Yes.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes.
Commissioner Aguilera?
Abstaining.
Yes.
So, the record shows six approved and one abstention. Thank you.
Very good. Ms. Chow, are there any changes to the agenda tonight?
No changes tonight. Thank you, Chairman.
Our next item is oral communication. Per the published meeting directions, we are unable to accept any oral communications received after 6:00 p.m. today. Ms. Chow, were there any communications received?
There were no oral communications received. Thank you.
Very good. We will now move on to our public hearings. I'll read the procedures that we're going to follow tonight and then we'll launch into our hearing. Per the published meeting directions, we are only able to accept public testimony via email or via voicemail since the point of public, the public hearing is closed. First, staff will give a presentation of the project, which may be followed by a presentation prepared by the applicant. Following the presentation, signing commissioners will have an opportunity to ask staff or the applicant questions for clarification. Commissioners, one additional note from our training the other night, it would be important to ask all of your questions of the applicant. If we come back from our time for input from the public and we ask additional questions of the applicant, we have to reopen, we have additional breaks or additional time for the public to participate. So, let's ask all of our questions upfront tonight. Following the commission's questions, public hearing will be opened and a certain amount of minutes will be provided for the public to email or fall in with any additional comments. The commission will take a break during this time. At the completion of the break period, the chairman will ask city staff to provide a summary of the comments received during the break to the commission. Those requesting to be read into the record will be read. The commission may request staff to provide responses or additional information based on the comments received. The chairman will close the public hearing. Once all public comments have been provided, the commission may then open for commission discussion and an ultimate vote. So, we will now move on to our first public hearing, which is P19-0472 Camp Bow Wow. Alex Willen is the applicant. And Mr. Mangathirian, your staff report, please.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes. Good evening, Chairman Rossler, planning commissioners, staff, and members of the public. It is my pleasure to present tonight the project for the applicant, Camp Bow Wow, for the April 21st, 2020 Planning Commission hearing. The project before you is for a plot plan permit, permit number P19-0472. Patsy, next slide, please. The proposed project is for a plot plan permit to allow a new dog kennel business to have outdoor play areas for dogs at 1929 West Vista Way, Suite Number 8. The proposed hours of operation are from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. each day of the week, and the tenant improvements are within a 4,242 square foot existing tenant space. Patsy, next slide, please. The property is currently zoned C3 commercial, and the general plan designation is General Commercial, G.C. Patsy, next slide, please. This is the proposed site plan, which is outlined in red, which is the proposed tenant space inclusive of the outdoor play area. Patsy, next slide, please. And this is the proposed floor plan, which shows common areas at the entrance of the tenant space, dog kennels within the tenant suite, and the proposed outdoor play areas. Patsy, next slide, please. These are the proposed north, south, and east elevations, which include the outdoor play areas, which will be a fenced enclosure. Patsy, next slide, please. The existing commercial center at 1929 West Vista Way currently has uses that are similar to the proposed dog kennel use, which do include dog grooming business, veterinary clinic, and a fishing supply store. Uses in neighboring properties include a paint shop, which is the Sherwin-Williams location, a self-storage facility, and a vacant office building. Patsy, next slide, please. The general plan designates the property as General Commercial, G.C., and the zoning designation for the property is C3 Commercial, in which a dog kennel is consistent with the general plan and designation of the site, because a dog kennel is a use permitted by rights with commercial zones. The proposed use is permitted by rights, however, the proposed outdoor use must be reviewed by the planning commission to make a final determination. All required onsite improvements are included in the project design. The subject site provides adequate parking and circulation to accommodate the proposed use. The applicant has submitted a noise study for their proposed business to confirm noise will not be a nuisance to the surrounding community. Patsy, next slide, please. Staff's recommendation is to adopt the resolution approving the plot plan permit for an outdoor dog play area at 1929 West Vista Way, Suite A. This concludes staff's presentation. I can answer any questions you may have. The applicant, Alex Willen, is on the line as well, should you need to ask him any questions. Thank you for your time. The applicant, I myself greatly appreciate this alternative way of conducting Planning Commission hearings. And with that, Patsy, I turn it over to you.
Chairman Rossler, the applicant does not have a formal presentation.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mangathirian. Do you have questions for staff? Vice Chair Kramer?
Chairman Rossler, may I? I'm sorry. Can I ask everybody to mute their phones, please? Thank you. I'm just receiving a lot of feedback at this end. Thank you. Go ahead. Chairman Rossler?
Yes. Vice Chair Kramer?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Any questions?
Yes.
Yes. I believe my question is a combination, some for staff and some for the applicant. I have three. My first question is, what is the approximate size of each of the play areas? My second question, or basically concern, is regarding the use of turf in lieu of natural grasses or dirt, stones, whatever. My thought is, or my concern is, how do you handle dog waste and getting that out of the area quick enough so that you don't end up with, I believe it's called jardia, which is, you know, something that dogs get from the waste of other dogs? And my last question is, I see that there are 30 dogs out total. Is that total in all four areas, or does each area, can each area hold 30 dogs, and that would be 120 dogs? So, those are my questions. Thank you. I'm gonna mute now.
Sure. Okay. I just wanted to answer the first question you had, which was for the square footage of the enclosure for the outside area. The total square footage for that outdoor area is about 437 square feet in size. As far as the other questions you had for turf, risk grass, and the dog waste, I'll let the applicant go more into detail about that. Alex, are you there?
Hi, this is Alex. Can everyone hear me?
Hi, Alex.
Yes.
Great. First, thank you to everyone for your time. Greatly appreciated. The first question in terms of the waste, so every yard that has at least one dog in it will have a trained staff member in it at all times, and so they're trained whether, you know, they're basically trained if a dog, you know, does go to the bathroom, they pick it up immediately and dispose of it. So, you know, the waste is removed quickly, and then the yards themselves are also cleaned on a daily basis with a turf cleaner, which is basically like an industrial-grade carpet cleaner, functions in a similar way. And just for more context on kind of the safety of the dogs, this is a franchise, so Camp Bow Wow is the largest dog boarding franchise out there, has about 170 locations nationwide. So, all of the procedures and everything around cleaning and maintaining the health and safety of the dogs are well-tested across, you know, that number of camps, many of which have been open for over a decade. To answer the last question, yes, that would be about 30 dogs total, just based on the square footage of the yards total and the kind of square footage that dogs need, you wouldn't expect to see more than 30 dogs out there total. And then candidly, the number of dogs out there at one time was typically much less than that. I've spoken to a lot of other Camp Bow Wow owners, particularly those in similar climates, and the reality is, once the weather gets above, you know, high 60s to 70, the dogs want to be inside in the air conditioning, similarly when it's raining, they want to be inside as well. So, really, there will be very few dogs out there, if any at all most of the time, but yeah, you would not expect to see more than 30 total across all four yards.
Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Hastings, any questions?
Yes, I have a question about the noise, the barking. I'm a big dog fan, but I've also been to many kennels, and they do bark. So, I know that you had a report, I read it, talking about similar kinds of kennels and the amount of noise, but I'm wondering, I guess this is a question for both you and for Rafi, is the building next door, the building that's gonna be right next to where the outdoor part is, is that building empty or occupied at the moment?
Which building are you referring to? Is it the one on the corner?
The one that has a red roof and it says something about dental implants or something?
I believe that building is still occupied. As far as what they do exactly, I believe it is a dental office. I don't, let me see, and then behind that building is the Sherwin-Williams and the self-storage facility. In regards to the noise, it is right by the freeway, which I believe in the report does note some additional information as far as what the normal day-to-day noise levels are. In regards to the dogs being out there and potentially being a noise nuisance, in the noise study, they do note that they are within the City of Vista Municipal Code for Noise Standards, that they are not exceeding 60 decibels between 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m., and that they will not be exceeding 55 decibels 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. But the dog, outdoor area will, dog kennel business is only open 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. anyway. In regards to the other questions you had, I'll let, for the noise study, I'll have Alex kind of jump in and go over that with you, if you'd like. Alex, did you hear all those questions?
I did, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I don't have a lot to add past what Rafi said, except basically, yeah, we are immediately freeway adjacent, so it's quite loud the vast majority of the time. So, you know, as the study indicates, even with the dogs barking out there, typically we're gonna be below the level of the ambient freeway noise regardless. So, for the most part, I would not expect it to be, you know, a significant change to the ambient noise in the area.
Okay. And Alex, sorry. I just wanted to jump in real quick. Alex, did you, you already said you had spoken to the other tenants in that building as well?
I was not able to speak to the tenants in that building. I was planning to before all of this, all of this happened and have not been able to locate their contact information online, and obviously haven't been able to visit there as well. So unfortunately, I have not spoken to them yet.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioner Hastings?
No. Thank you for the information.
Commissioner Grimm, any question?
Yeah, I had a couple. First, well, I'll just go through the three questions, but first, was there any feedback from any other uses in the center? In other words, particularly negative feedback about issues coming in? And then the second question was, there's, there could be up to 30 dogs outside at one time. Alex had mentioned a staff member. I'm wondering, is there gonna be, if there are 30, as many as 30 dogs, will there be more than one staff member out there? And then the final question is, I suppose at times, there could be an animal that escapes through a gate or something and, you know, gets loose. Is there any, and I'm not suggesting it's a condition, but is there any requirement or thought that the clients that come in should either have a chip or caller ID? And by caller, it's C-O-L-L-A-R, caller ID. Just in case one escapes, is there, you know, a way to kind of find it quickly? I don't know. Anyway, those are my three questions.
Okay. I'll go ahead and start. In regards to the other tenants, they are very similar in use, and I believe one of those tenants, the, there's a dog grooming business there, as well as a veterinary clinic, which I believe does have kennels on the inside of the tenant space as well. The other tenant is a bait and tackle fish retailer, and the other two tenant spaces in that shopping center are both vacant. There was a sign, banner manufacturing business there before. They left a few months ago, and they think there was a chiropractor office as well, which is no longer there. So, the uses are very similar. I believe with the dog kennel business going in, that would just provide more business for the dog groomer or the veterinary clinic, so that they are aware that those uses are in that shopping center as well. And then as far as the other questions?
Okay, my question was, there was, you haven't had any negative feedback, right?
No, no. Nothing from the public. Haven't heard anything negative or any concerns from the public at this point. And as far as the dogs escaping or staff members being out with the dogs, I'll let Alex handle that question.
Okay.
So, just to add on a little bit with regards to feedback from the other tenants, so I did have a chance to meet with the vet. As Rafi mentioned, they do some boarding there. The upside for them is that the way that my boarding business will work is it's a social environment where the dogs play with each other all day, where theirs is a much more traditional kennel, where the dogs are kept individually and taken out for walks by themselves. And so the upside for them is that, should I, you know, we basically have to test every dog when they come in to make sure that they get along well in that kind of environment. If they don't, then of course, you know, we're able to recommend a more individual boarding down the street. So, not, not really competition there, and, you know, no negative feedback when I was able to meet with the Dr. Port, the owner of that veterinary clinic. Was not able to meet with the other two tenants, but the property manager did tell me that she, she spoke to both of them when I signed the lease. She said the dog groomer is excited that I'm coming in, they expect that I'll drive business, which I certainly think I will for them, and the bait shop was indifferent, no negative feedback on that. Absolutely. In terms of feedback, or sorry, in terms of if there are over 30 dogs, so just to clarify my earlier remark, when I say there's one staff member per yard, so that there's four outdoor yards, so if there were 30 dogs out there, that would mean that all four yards are occupied, and so there would be four staff members out, plus we have additional runners inside. So, it's one dog per each of those yards, or as long as each one of those yards has a single dog in it.
Great.
The last question about dogs getting loose, so the first thing that I will note is, has almost never happened in the history of Camp Bow Wow, and, you know, they've got a lot of franchises that have been open for quite a while. You'll note, even on the indoor yard, there's only one access to outside of the business from the outdoor yard, and that's double-gated, for exactly the reasons that you're suggesting. Similarly, inside, dogs have to get, have to get through at least two doors to get out of the building. So, dogs should be very secure, but absolutely, we recommend that every dog that come in be microchipped, you know, something that we ask that people do with the vet along, you know, while they're getting all their required vaccinations if they haven't already been microchipped. But yeah, certainly, you know, we very much encourage all of our dog, all the dog owners that bring in their dogs to observe all the traditional safety that you would around dogs. We love them, wouldn't want anything bad to happen to them, whether they're in our care or elsewhere, so definitely would encourage that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Garrettson, any questions?
Yes, a couple of questions. One is, the fence is eight feet tall, and it's vinyl. Is that a solid wall?
Yes, that's a solid vinyl wall.
Okay. Second question relates to noise, different perspective. The study that was done, was done in a yard with 1,250 square feet. This one only has 450. So, are we gonna have more activity and more noise in this yard with 450 square feet than we did in the one with, the study with 1,250? In other words, is the study valid in light of the fact that this is roughly a third the size with the same number of dogs? Wouldn't they tend to be more noisy in a smaller area?
Rafi, you want me to take that?
I was gonna, I actually had that be answered by Alex in regards to the square footage between this enclosure and the other enclosure that the noise study was done at. Alex, did you have any response to that?
Yeah, so, I think in practice, the big difference between that yard, if you look at some of the photographs, and our yard is, that's a business that's designed where the dogs are mainly going to be spending time outside. That's why the yard is so big. So, you know, we have large indoor yards attached to these outdoor yards, so we would expect them to spend the vast majority of their time inside. Like I said, they need the A.C., and also the staff member will almost always be inside as well. They also like the A.C., and the dogs tend to want to be where the staff member is as well. So, for the most part, you know, it is a smaller square footage, but as I mentioned, in practice, because we have that big interior yard space that, you know, the comparable business did not, the dogs don't have to be outside all the time, so all the dogs won't be out there as they would there. So, I would overall expect much less. And then certainly, you know, we can control the flow of the dogs as well. There's, there are doors between the indoor and the outdoor yard, so if needed, we can keep the number of dogs down by only allowing one or two of the outdoor yards to be open, if that were to become necessary.
So, if you have four yards and 32 dogs, the most you'd have in any one would be eight, correct? Roughly?
Uh, yeah, so that would be for the outdoor yard, correct?
For the outdoor yard, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, good. My final question relates to the runoff of the water for cleaning outside. Where does that go? Does that go in the parking lot next door, or is there a drainage there? Where does the runoff go from the, from this area, when you're cleaning or spraying it down or whatever?
So, to clean the turf, we don't actually spray it down. What we use is basically a large, or a carpet cleaner. So, what it does is, it has sort of a row of nozzles in the front, and those nozzles basically inject cleaner down into the turf, and then there's a vacuum effectively behind those that draws the water, or that draws, you know, all liquids back up into the vacuum itself. So, anytime there's liquid in there that's being cleaned, it's being drawn up into the vacuum, and then, you know, we would dispose of it correctly, you know, inside.
Gotcha. So, it's an extractor. Okay, gotcha. Thank you. That's all I have.
Very good. Commissioner Looney, any questions?
Yes, I do. I have three and one comment. On page three of the report, page three of 30, item J, which is the ordinance requirements, and the, the end of the second line, it says, "The planning commission must approve the proposed outdoor play area enclosure as a modification to Vista Development Code Section 1840-30. That uses remain indoors." Well, is this application site-specific? Because, or are we looking at the, the overall code, the city code of this?
It is site-specific. This is John Conley, Community Development Director. It is site-specific.
Okay. Okay, thank you, John. The second question that Commissioner Garrettson Second question that Commissioner Garrison brought up regarding the eight-foot fence. Is there, does the zoning allow an eight-foot tall fence without any special review or approval? I know six-foot fences are often allowed. Is an eight-foot standard height for commercial development?
Uh, yeah. So the fence height is proposed to be eight feet. Anything above seven feet, they would need to apply for a building permit, which they will be applying for if this project gets approved. But it would just be a building permit review for that fence to be on the outside of that building.
Okay, thank you. Third question, and this is just confirming that no dogs are going to be left outdoors overnight. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes. All dogs are put up in their own individual cabins overnight and then they're let into the play yards just during the day while their staff are there to supervise.
Okay, thank you. And John Conley, this is maybe best suited for you. At the intersection of Civic Center, Sunset and Crestview, there is Crestview Grooming and Boarding, which sounds like they're a similar use. The outdoor yard area at this facility often has dogs out all night. And so I just wanted to make sure that what's being proposed on Vista Way is not that kind of arrangement. And from what you've just said, it confirms that they're not going to be outside all night.
Yeah, Don, I will jump in here. The site that is on Sunset and Crestview is a legal non-conforming use. It was established before the city was incorporated, so there are no conditions on their operation of the kennel, whereas we're imposing the conditions that you discussed regarding the day use only for this use.
Okay. The dogs are quite, you can hear them all night. That's the only reason I'm bringing it up. So, okay. Thank you, John, for that clarification. And Commissioner, Chairman, all the questions that I have.
Real quick, sorry, my phone call dropped and I just signed back in. If there's any questions, I do apologize.
No, you're fine.
Okay.
That's all that I had. Chairman.
Very good. Commissioner Aguilera, any questions for staff or the applicant?
No, my only, I think a lot of good questions have been asked this evening, so I think it's been very thorough. My only concern was if there was any residential nearby and I, I've been by the place before and there's nothing very close, so I'm comfortable with the proposal.
Okay, very good. That concludes our questioning of staff and the applicant. We will now take a five-minute break for the public to provide their comments. I have 6:34.
Chairman Rossler, this is Patty. City staff, this is just a one-minute warning and we'll let you know when we're ready to start again at this end, okay?
Okay.
Chairman Rossler, we are ready when you are.
Very good. And that concludes our break. We are back in session. Ms. Chow, were there any comments from the public?
Chairman Rossler, we received no public comments during the comment period. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioners, I will then close the public hearing and open it up to discussion amongst the commissioners. Commissioner Kramer, any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My only comments are, I think it's a good thing and a good use in that area, so I will be voting in favor of it. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Hastings? Commissioner Grim, comments?
Uh, no.
Commissioner Garrettson, any comments?
No further comments.
Very good. Commissioner Looney?
No additional comments.
And Commissioner Aguilar?
No comment.
Very good.
This is Beth Hastings. I hit the wrong button, but I have no comments. Sorry.
All right, very good. No problem. So we've concluded our public hearing, our discussion. Would someone like to make a motion?
Commissioner Grim, I will move staff recommendation.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Commissioner Kramer, seconds.
Commissioners, it's been moved in second to approve the project as proposed by staff. Ms. Chow, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Chairman Rossler?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kramer?
Yes.
Commissioner Hastings?
Yes.
Commissioner Grimm?
Yes.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes.
Commissioner Aguilar?
Yes.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes.
Commissioner Aguilar?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously for the record.
Very good. Thank you very much. We will then move on to our second public hearing. P-20-0072 is a general, general plan amendment and zone change. The city is the applicant. And Ms. Chow, your staff report, please.
Thank you, Chairman Rossler. This is Patty Chow, City Planner, Deputy Director of the Community Development Department. I'm pleased to be here this evening to present to you before you the item PH2, which is a request that the staff is putting before you for a general plan amendment and a zone change to designate specific natural resource areas as open space and also applying a biological preserve overlay zone as an additional protection layer. These areas are all located within the city of Vista right-of-way areas and there are no parcel lines that are actually distinguishing these subject areas. They're comprised of a total of approximately 6.4 acres. They contain southern cottonwood, willow, riparian forest-type vegetation, southern willow scrub, as well as some exotic riparian woodland and coastal sage scrub. And Buena Vista Creek also traverses the subject areas. The proposed general plan and the zoning designations would actually help preserve the integrity of these riparian habitat areas, the creek corridors and drainage areas to support biological resources and actually contribute to the overall health of watershed areas while preserving native plant species. On this slide, which is slide number 24, one can see the actual areas depicted on the aerial photo or delineated in yellow and comprising a total of 6.4 acre areas. And again, these are all city of right-of-way areas contained within the city of Vista, located north of Hacienda Drive and south of the SR 78 freeway. These two exhibits mainly identify on slide number 25, the general plan amendment, which would allow for the open space designation to be attached to these particular areas, as well as a new zone of open space to be identified for these areas, along with the biological preserve overlay zone, BPO, that would be attached to the specific areas as well. So the staff's recommendation is for the planning commission to recommend to the city council approval of the general plan amendment and the zone change to designate the specific natural resource areas as open space and apply the biological preserve overlay zone to them as well. And this concludes my presentation and I'm available for questions you may have. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Commissioners, questions for staff? Commissioner Kramer, any questions for staff?
No.
Mr. Hastings? We'll come back to her. Commissioner Grim?
Uh, no questions.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yeah, just a comment. I noticed that it said this would include a total of 616 acres, well, the total under OS, open space, 6% of the land. What is our goal for open land?
As the number that you've just-
Open land area.
The number that you just referred to, Commissioner Garrettson's, identifying currently in our general plan as identified as of the last update, the 616 acres or 6% of the land in the city that's identified as open space. So that's as of right now, or as of the last update, what we have identified. We've obviously the addition of these 6.4 acres that we, it's the subject of the tonight's item.
Do we have a target or just to try to maintain that 6-plus percent?
I think at this point, we certainly want to keep what we have and consider this opportunity that's before you for additional open space. But that's as far as I know at this point from staff's knowledge on this.
Very, very good. Thank you. Commissioner Looney, any questions of staff?
I do have one question for staff. And Ms. Chow, if you could go to slide 24, please.
Yes, I'm there.
So on slide 24, if we go to the far right edge of that slide, we pick up just the very beginning of Vista Village Drive. As we go north of State Route 78, just on the north edge, we've got the Ford dealership. The, let me call it the creek, passes under 78 at the corner of the Ford dealership property. My question is, is that creek basin city property or is that part of the Ford dealership property?
That actually, that's a good question. Part of that actually falls outside of the city's right-of-way and actually into, partially into Caltrans right-of-way. So we actually remove that from consideration for tonight's item as we're only dealing with areas that are contained within the city's right-of-way.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. That was all that I had.
Commissioner Aguilar, any questions of staff?
No, I had a similar question. Just wanted to know how far up it could go on that creek, but you answered the question.
Ms. Chow?
Yes, I'm here.
No, the question's been answered. The previous commissioner asked the same question, or similar question.
Okay, very good. Let's go back to Commissioner Hastings. Did you have any questions?
Uh, yeah, I had an informational question. I apologize, I'm apparently technologically inept tonight. I just wanted to know what the definition of an overlay zone is.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Hastings, could you repeat the question one more time?
Um, we're talking about, the resolution is talking about zone changes to include applying the biological preserve overlay zone. So what is an overlay zone?
Sure, certainly. So the biological preserve overlay zone is identified in the Vista Development Code and it's basically what it is. It's an additional layer of protection on top of the particular designation that we are recommending that be attached to these particular areas. In other words, the designation of open space in our general plan, as well as the zone designation of open space. So what the biological preserve overlay zone does is, again, is an additional layer of protection over the open space zone and there are particular standards or particular requirements and expectations associated with it as called out in our development code in order to protect valuable natural resources and enhancing and improving natural resources within the BPO or the biological preserve overlay zone. As it kind of, well, it acts as an overlay zone on top of the zone, there are specific requirements as far as what uses are allowed in there or permitted and in what, in what shape or form can they take place and also what are prohibited uses to take place in there. So in essential, essentially in answer to your question, is adding an additional layer of protection and additional requirements and specific standards, limitations associated with this zone and this overlay zone as well. Does that help?
Yes, excellent. Thank you.
Sure.
Very good. That concludes our time for questions of staff. Ms. Chow, do we need, do we need five minutes here or do you have an opinion?
Um, we'll go ahead and check the record- Um, we'll go ahead and check the record and see if we have gotten anything at this point, but I would suggest that, yes, we do take the same approach, and that would allow us to make certain that we didn't receive anything. Or if we received something, then we'll let you know.
All right, very good. I have 6:50. We will take a break now and reconvene at 6:55.
Chairman Rossler, this is Patsy again, and we are ready to start when you are.
Very good. And we're back. We are reconvening at 6:55. Ms. Chow, was there any input from the public?
Chairman Rossler, we received no comments during the public comment period. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Hearing that, then I will close the public hearing, and we will move on to Commissioners' comments. Commissioner Kramer, any comments?
No, Mr. Chairman, I have no comments.
Very good. Commissioner Hastings?
Uh, no comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Grimm?
No comments.
All right. Commissioner Garrettson?
Uh, no comment.
Good. Commissioner Looney?
No comments.
And Commissioner Aguilar?
No comment.
Very good. All right, so, we can move on to decision. Would someone like to make a motion on the project?
This is Commissioner Aguilar. I'd like to make a motion to accept the change.
This is Commissioner Garrettson. I'd like to second that motion.
All right, very good. We have a motion and a second to approve the general plan amendment and zone change. Ms. Chow, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Chairman Rossler?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kramer?
Yes.
Commissioner Hastings?
Yes.
Commissioner Grimm?
Yes.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes.
Commissioner Aguilar?
Yes.
So the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Very good. That concludes our public hearings for this evening. We'll move on to reports or comments from the Commissioners. Any reports or comments from Commissioners?
I had one. Last meeting, we approved the Hilton Garden Inn down on South Millows, and we were specifically concerned about the architecture of that building. I think many, after the planning Commissioners' workshop up in Sacramento, I had the opportunity to go to Yosemite for a couple of days, and we were driving south out of Yosemite through Oakhurst, and that building was built three times right next to each other. Fairfield Inn was the only one that I can, I can think of, but I think we made a very wise decision in requiring additional architectural treatment on that building. I know John says that it's, it's back on the market now, but, but I think we were, I think we were wise. I was really shocked to see that building. They changed colors and they changed materials, but it is the same architecture three times in a row, and fairly ugly, so.
So if there aren't any other comments, I will turn it over to John.
Actually, Rick, I did have one, one comment or one question. It's Commissioner Grimm?
Go ahead.
It's for staff. When we were talking about open spaces tonight, I started thinking about the changes in, you know, some of the golf courses going, going under and then being bought up by developers in that there was no underlying general plan designation of open space, or a lot of times they were part of planned communities. Hopefully, that would never happen to Shadow Ridge, but maybe a question for staff, and it doesn't have to be asked, answered, denied, but just what's, what's, what would happen if, if Shadow Ridge wasn't able to continue? Would there be development rights on that, that area?
So, Commissioner Grimm, this is John Connolly. We actually checked on that back when Escondido had the problem that they had with their golf course. Confirmed that it is, in fact, all zoned open space on Shadow Ridge, so if the golf course were to cease operation, it would have to stay in open space unless the council rezoned it.
Fantastic. Okay, thank you, John.
Yeah. John, any additional comments from you this evening?
Uh, no, only that we will have another meeting on May 5th, where we will be hearing the Tri-City Islamic Center item that was rescheduled from back in March. And Patsy, do you have anything else to add? That's all I have.
Uh, no, nothing to add. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Well, then, I have 7 o'clock, and we will stand adjourned, and we will get back together for our next meeting. Thank you very much, everyone, and we'll work through this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay healthy.